And we are recording.
And we have six o'clock. All the stars align, wonderful. Okay, let's get started. Are you ready? All right, good evening, everybody. This is a Swamaco Village Board meeting for Monday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. The time is six P. M. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by trustee Ward to approve the agenda. I have a second by trustee Rodden. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. At this time, let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you. Item number five, public appearances. At this time, the public may come forward, may address the village board on items that are not on the schedule. Please speak into the microphone, provide us your name and address. Let us know what's on your mind. Anybody here who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? Very good. Hearing none, we'll move on to item six. Item six, presentations. Item six A, resolution two, three, zero, zero, one for firefighter Scott Weesa thirty-year award retirement. Chief Burtler.
All righty, Scott Weesa is here tonight. He spent thirty years on the department, serving his time as a captain and a safety officer in his latest role, and just like to thank him for all of his dedication and hard work towards the department.
Scott, do you want to come forward? Congratulations. You have, not only do you have longevity, but you must have significant amount of patience. All right, so I'd like to read the resolution if I could, and then we'll discuss this as a board. Resolution two, three, zero, zero, one, retirement resolution commending Scott Weesa. The Board of Trustees of the Village of Swamaco, the Board of Trustees, the Village Board of Swamaco, do resolve as follows. Whereas Scott Weesa has steadfastly and devotedly served the Village of Swamaco Fire Department since November tenth, nineteen ninety-two, and whereas he has provided exemplary service to the Village of Swamaco Fire Department, having contributed practical and valuable skills as a member of the Fire Department, and whereas he retired from the Village of Swamaco Fire Department on January first, twenty twenty-three, after thirty years of dedicated service, serving as captain and safety officer, now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Swamaco recognizes Scott Weesa's faithful service with a commendation and expression of gratitude, and hereby makes this commendation a part of his official record. We would like to adopt this today, the sixteenth of January, on twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from trustee Rodden to adopt this resolution. We have a second from trustee Schneider. Any further discussion?
It's the first one of the year.
We should do a roll call.
Yes, and madam clerk, could we have this as a roll call vote?
Absolutely. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Romez.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously seven to zero.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to say, thank you, village board, thanks to the Village of Swamaco. Thirty years ago, I could never imagine I'd be standing here. You know, over thirty years, I had six chiefs, learned a lot of things, saw a lot of things, not all good, obviously, because we do things that people don't want to do. Otherwise, I want to thank all my team members. I want to thank Chief Joe, a little thing on the side. Joe started on the Fire Department, actually took him under my wing. I was actually his officer on his first call, so just shows how this department has grown. And the last thing I want to say is, thank you. My wife, my family, they put up a lot of stuff for thirty years. A lot of meals missed, a lot of time drying out the house all night, you know, a lot of missed basketball games, volleyball games, things like that. So, and my last thing is, I just want to say, I believe in this department a lot better than when I joined. You've got a hell of a crew. And I guess that's enclosing. Thank you very much.
We'd like to take a short recess.
Yeah.
Could I, it would, I would like to offer a motion.
For a five-minute recess.
That we take a five-minute recess.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from trustee Rodden. We have a second from trustee Ward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are in recess for five minutes. Thank you again.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Michelle, could you just mute it?
Are we back?
We're back.
So we have a, we have a motion from, we have a motion from trustee Schneider to reconvene, and we have a second from trustee Rodden. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We are back in open session.
I think you can just bring.
So at this time, we will move to item six B. Six B is grant writer twenty twenty-two annual report. We are looking for Administrator Caker and grant writer Ben Rogers.
All right, thank you. So I invited Ben to come make a presentation on all his success in two thousand twenty-two, reaching out and securing some grant funding for the Village of Swamaco. I'll let him run through it, and then the board may ask questions if they have any, and we'll try to answer them as best we can. So with that, Ben, welcome. Thank you for coming, and go ahead.
Thank you for having me. Good to see everybody again. You should have a copy of the report. We'll just go through it here. The proposals that we did receive in two thousand twenty-two include four sets of body armor from the Wisconsin Healthcare, Northeast Wisconsin Healthcare Emergency Readiness Coalition in the event of a crisis, CoVantage Cares Foundation awarded a thousand dollars to help with the Calavera Springs Park Soccer Complex, the WPS Foundation awarded ten thousand to help with the Calavera Springs Park Soccer Complex, the Department of Administration awarded fifty-one thousand dollars in the form of an EMS Flex Grant to the Fire Department for equipment, training, and PPE. The DNR approved just over six thousand for wildfire PPE. The Green Bay Packers Foundation awarded six thousand to help resurface two tennis courts at Calavera Springs Park, and the Auto Club Group Foundation awarded thirty-six hundred for a dynamic speed display sign to reduce the number of speeders. This is a different way of looking at that information. This totals, this shows the entire, just about eighty-two thousand dollars that was awarded in two thousand and twenty-two. You can see there was a forty-three percent success rate. The combined success rate, when we look at the Village of Howard and the school district, is sixty-five percent, and that is five percent above the national success rate, according to the Grant Professionals Association. Those are the best of the best in the grant-writing world, so I think that's fairly good. The next one here is something I wanted to highlight. This is not a grant that gives anything monetarily to the Village of Swamaco, but the school district is the lead partner in a collaborative effort between the two fire departments and N W T C to start what we call the Building Up Future Firefighters Program. We're going to take juniors and seniors, twelve of them a semester. We're going to put them through firefighter one certification, with the hopes being by the time they turn eighteen, they can join as a paid-on-call volunteer in one of the two municipal fire departments. There were, there was fifty thousand in this grant, and we got just about half of it with our proposal. The education foundation's chipping in for textbooks. We have, are in talks with the healthcare provider to chip in to donate free physicals, so we make sure everyone's healthy enough to do this. This is really exciting. We've been, already had about four meetings on it. W F R V came out and did a story on it. This is just a great collaborative spotlight that shows that even though Swamaco is not necessarily getting a check for anything, that Swamaco stands to benefit from this grant. Check's going to four sets of turnout gear, which will be used to help the students complete their, practical part of their firefighter one certification exam. The next page you saw.
Real quick.
Sure.
Is there any students wanting to do this? I'm assuming there has to be.
We just started opening enrollment for fall, and the woman in charge of coordinating the career pathways already has a lot of kids interested.
That's cool.
And they've already had, like, maybe three school days to look at this stuff. So there's actually some concern that the first cohort's going to fill pretty quickly, and we'll have to get students in line for it. So if you talked to Joe about it at the Bayport Career Affairs, the fire departments are always the most popular place for the kids to come and check out. So in the W F R V story, it was his intern who was on camera as a student, and she had some great things to say about working for the Swamaco Fire Department. She was very proud of it, so.
Good deal.
Actually, I just wanted to say two to you, too, chief. I meant to bring it up on things not on the agenda, but now it's in line with our discussion. I just wanted to compliment you, chief, everyone involved in that. I had a couple of different constituents who I happened to also work with who came up and said they saw it on the news, and what a great program, and what a great idea, and, you know, kind of going outside of the box to bring recruits in, and to start to get them young, get them interested young. Good job.
Thank you.
Both.
You, you heard before I had a forty-three percent success rate in two thousand twenty-two for the Village of Swamaco. That means nine proposals failed. That's below my other success rate that I've had this year, so I really want to bring that up. To me, forty-three percent is, is not acceptable, regardless of the amount of dollars that come in. We should be making the asks that we know we have a great chance for. So why, why did nine proposals fail? Well, two of those proposals were from FEMA for some firefighter grants. The numbers just came out. There was a little over seven hundred million, and I think it was about two and a half billion in requests. Thousands of fire departments apply for these. These are the most needy of the needy fire departments that are either all volunteer, or they're driving converted vehicles, or they don't have safe turnout gear. But there's things we can do to make our case stronger, and that's part of what I'm learning, and I'm working on both of those with chief Joe right now. We didn't really have great fits for a few of these things. It's my first year, so I can take the blame for that, but Calavera Springs Park, handheld radar units, and some fire department improvements where we're asking for funding, they're tough sells to certain funders, and it's about finding the right funders. And finally, there was limited plans. Plans show funders we are serious about projects. The more expansive the plan, the more serious we become. So something called the Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan will open us up to grants from the Department of Natural Resources, Knowles Nelson, Stewardship Foundation, and then a community risk assessment is something that's a really good tool to have when going after public safety grants. Grants are essentially legally binding contracts, and when you get into these higher amounts, would you go and provide funding for a program that did not have an expansive plan versus another one that did have it? So we are, we are working on that. Nick got the, Nick and Steve got the parks board on board with the court plan, so that's coming along, and I do plan to apply for some Knowles Nelson funding to help the Calavera Springs Park project along, probably in April and May. The next one here is, is just a different way to look at the amount of funding. We had three grants in that, the top darker purple. You can see how much those brought in, and then the four grants below it were foundation grants. So really, the big money comes from the state or the federal government. Get those. You have to do things a little differently. It's completely different than approaching a private foundation. The next one in line, you can kind of see the smallest, the average, and the largest, and then below that, the types of projects that were funded, capital being a third, and then equipment and supplies being two-thirds. So as I said before, forty-three percent, I'm going to do everything I can to bring that up closer to sixty percent. And these are the three factors that I saw as holding us back, and you'll see in a moment how I plan to address some of these. But demographics, and this is, this is good. This is a point of pride. You have a two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-dollar median home value, only two-point-six percent of households below federal poverty limits, ninety-eight thousand median household income. These are all really good things, and we can't change those things. So when you are dealing with some foundations and some groups, those types of statistics, they play a part in who's eligible to apply, for who the award goes to. There was a lack of investment, so essentially you have to put a little money out to get money back. You're looking at money for plans, money for startup costs, for seed funding. When you're trying to fund a two-hundred-thousand-dollar park improvement project, and you have five thousand in the bank, that's not a good spot to be in, so.
Is that, excuse me, is that an actual example, then, from this year, from your year? Was there a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that was looking for some investment from Swamaco with regard to park and rec, and we didn't make that investment? Or were there grants you had to pass because we did not have investments in our park and rec?
When you're going to a private foundation that funds municipal governments, every foundation is set up a little differently. So a private foundation might require that you have a certain poverty percentage. Okay, well, we don't, we can't go to that one. The ones that I did find that we were available to apply for, you know, it's not like they said no to me immediately, but again, it shows how serious is this project if we're trying to raise this from the ground up. And that's something we'll, we'll discuss here in a minute on how to improve that. And then kind of into that, like a five-oh-one-C-three status. So we don't have the plants qualify for certain state grants, had to look to private foundations, but those require a five-oh-one-C-three status to give an award to. So.
I'm sorry to interrupt you again. Could you just define for everybody what five-oh-one-C-three status is? Most folks probably don't know what that is.
A federal tax-exempt status.
Okay. Thank you.
So is there, is there any way that we can create a foundation within our government to get that status?
We can, and that's something that we'll work on, and it's something that we need to engage our attorney on to draft bylaws, and it would end up being like a separate committee. It's something that I've been through, through my last position. We created one as we were trying to build a recreation center. We actually created our own five-oh-one-C-three, but it ended up being for the entire township, so that you could receive things like police donations, and then that person could write off that donation. So that's something that we've got our eyes on for twenty twenty-three.
Absolutely, because I, I think that goes back to our demographics. You know, if people can use them as write-offs, there, I think there's people within our community that may look to donate if they could, but they can't right now.
Frequently, you'll see something like Friends of the Park. I think Nick has some experience with that in West Bend, so we've got some, some background in doing things like this, and we'll, we'll pursue that this year.
And the school district's a prime example of that. I mean, they have had tremendous success with private donations.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't bat an eye when I said I need fifteen hundred dollars for textbooks to train young firefighters. And it was like, okay, when do you need it? But, you know, that kind of thing, so. So I did come up with an action plan, goals for myself, and goals for the board and the village, three apiece. My first goal, if you look at that breakdown of state private foundations, I want to write more large grants. That's where the big impact money can be found. These grants take a lot longer, they involve more people, but they have a much bigger impact. Case in point, a equipment manufacturer was offering a grant for a community project, and it was a hundred-thousand-dollar grant. And I wrote a really nice essay, and I pulled Nick in, and he reviewed it, and there were probably like three hundred applicants in our region alone, and only one of them's going to get it. You know, and then there's four other regions across the country. So when you're looking at something like the DNR, you have a much better chance of getting that grant, because that pool's going to be a little more limited. Your first goal would be to be proactive to planning. Like I said previously, those larger established state programs require specific and exact plans, so keep your eye to the future and be prepared and ready for what could come next. In terms of like the DNR, I couldn't even get a seat at the table. They wouldn't even let me in the door without that court plan. That just killed, killed that opportunity immediately. My goal, my second goal, is to embrace those demographics. There's a mindset, a change. I can't change people's, well, I can't, you can't change demographics, but you can change perceptions. This is an excellent place to live. You have these things going for you that are extremely, extremely positive. There might be a funder out there that looks to us as an example of a well-to-do community, and that might be what they're looking to fund. I'm on the lookout for that. Second goal, as we mentioned, start a community-based five-oh-one-C-three. Friends Park, Education Foundation, you know, they're out there. That's something that we need. There are three or four of the biggest foundations in the area only give to five-oh-one-C-three groups. They do not give to municipal governments. My third goal, then, kind of goes with the more large grants, but it's write fewer, but write better applications. So less is more. Go after winners and find funders that better fit our projects. Not find projects to fit the funders, but find the funders to fit what we, as a village, want to do. And finally, the third goal for the board and the village is to have patience. Grants are relatively new to the Village of Swamaco. You know, we're laying a foundation. This kind of thing takes some time. Some grants only open up once a year. You know, I firmly believe we're going to get where we need to go, but it's, it's not like throwing a switch. There has to be some stuff in place. And that is my annual report.
So Ben, do you feel that, since you've been at it for a year, that your base information that you need for a lot of these applications is now at your fingertips?
Yeah.
You know, that it's easier to start an application and get it going, and then get into the nitty-gritty of that particular application is?
Yeah, it is, and every application is going to require, you know, something different. I can pull that up through a variety of different sources, Census Bureau, Community Foundation, different hubs, to find out whatever kind of stats we need that would be required or that kind of reflects something in our community. And yeah, it took some time to find those and have them at my fingertips, but if any of you have any questions about demographics of the village, feel free to email me, and I can probably get back to you in about four minutes.
Excellent. And then my last question is, you know, just with the Calavera Springs, being that we're, you know, phase one is soccer fields, you know, I don't assume anything, but the question to you is, have you reached out to national soccer leagues or, or foundations, soccer foundations, anything to garner some grant money from actual soccer clubs or, or soccer organizations, you know, national or international?
The big, big push right now of the United States Soccer Federation, or what they call micro pitches, that they would put in urban areas to get more of that concentrated youth playing a faster game, not more of an open game. That's also because space is limited in those urban areas. So pretty much every single grant that the United States Soccer Federation gave out this year went to putting micro pitches in cities like Milwaukee, Cleveland, Minneapolis, stuff like that, where more kids have an opportunity to play. Doesn't matter that it's a zoo out there on game day, a Calavera Springs Park, but that's the intent of that one. So I think five or six of the grants I attempted were for Calavera Springs Park.
Have you connected with any of the local clubs, the directors of the two local clubs, the, what is it, Howard Fire and? No, not the Hurricanes anymore. What's wrong with me? The Loons, the Wisconsin Loons.
Yeah, I did talk to Howard Fire. There's a foundation in Okanto we wanted to approach, and they fund in the area of Okanto, as long as it benefits the community of Okanto. But we have like maybe five or six kids from Okanto playing in a league with like five hundred. So I worked with Howard Fire to complete that application, and they submitted it on behalf. If they would have gotten that application, there would have been a check for that project.
I think, I think less is more, but in a different way than you do. I think you did just fine. I mean, how much, how much did we pay for him?
So, yeah, Ben's cost to the village was about seventeen thousand, and he brought in a little over eighty.
So, yeah, and I, I mean, you know, as far as like the bigger grants, like the, the state and the federal ones, I mean, you guys all know, they scare me because they have more strings attached, and they're harder and longer to get, and you have to commit to these plans that I'm not always so thrilled about. So I think it's, I think it's fine, just the way it was, and some of those private ones were a good idea, and I think it's good the way it is.
I would, I would agree with trustee Eckert. I think that, you know, what you did this year was, was good. I mean, you had four, four grants which were applicable to public safety. You had three that were applicable to park and rec. So public safety, we can always use assistance on, right? There's no end to needs of public safety. Park and rec, we've underfunded, you know, dramatically over the years because we've had to, because we have other priorities. So any, you know, ground that you can make up with regard to park and rec is, is significant. The other thing I was going to mention, an observation, and maybe it's a suggestion, you had mentioned the embrace of demographics. So one thing we've talked about over the years here is this idea of a value proposition, the thing that we have in Swamaco that nobody else has. I think that your embrace of demographics should include that development of a value proposition for the Village of Swamaco. So maybe you already have that. I know that a lot of grants call for things like that, because I have to write a lot of grants as well. So concentrating and developing a really strong value proposition would be, I think, really important to help us move forward. I appreciate your work. I appreciate everything you've done. I think that for the first year, it's a good start, and I appreciate your goals and plan going forward, and look forward to next year.
Yeah, I appreciate the work you've done, Ben. It was a successful first year, so, and, and you have goals that you want to meet and, and get at, so I hope we do, and I know things will probably be better next year. Thank you.
Others, other comments? Were thoughts, suggestions?
I will say, too, you know, big picture, we had this idea that we'd partner with two other municipalities or two other government entities and hope to see a benefit amongst all three taxing entities, and in his first year, he's raised over a million dollars. I know most of that's to the school district, but those are tax dollars that our residents are also not going to have to pay because he raised those monies. So congratulations for breaking the million-dollar barrier, and hopefully you get another one this year.
Hey, Ben, I want to offer just one more suggestion if I could.
Sure.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. But in this grant process, I think for one of these grants, I'm not sure if it, it was so long ago, I'm not sure if it's the one we got or not, but you asked me to write a letter. I, I don't know if that worked out or not. but you asked me to write a letter. Um, I, I don't know if that worked out or not, um, but my point is that was a really good experience for me to have that opportunity. So when you're looking for that, I'd like to see if you could extend that opportunity to the other trustees. So at random, pick anybody out. Um, I did it once. I'm happy to do it again, but let's give everybody else a try first because I think that it really gets the different perspective of all the individuals on this board, um, out there and really it gets them vested in this whole process. So if you could include the board in providing you and assisting you in this, that would be great.
Oh, we don't need to say who that grants through. I don't know if you remember, but, um.
It doesn't matter.
We failed and I'm, I'm like Andy Dufresne and Shawshank asking for a library.
Yeah, so obviously, obviously, if we failed, I am not the letter writer of choice, so let's try somebody else. But let's involve these board folks.
What they don't tell you is that they won't increase their market share, so they give to communities where they can increase their market share. But still, Andy Dufresne and Shawshank, they're gonna have to pay me to stop bothering them.
They said specifically it was Sky's letter.
All right, thank you, Ben.
All right.
Yes, thank you.
Who do I have to write a check to now? Are you trying to get me to write a check?
Writing or get busy dying.
Thank you for your work.
Putting that letter.
All right. Um, let's move along here. So item six C. Item six C, which is County Highway M Expansion Project Update. This is from Director Smits and I'm assuming you're Rich Glenn with JT Engineering. I'd know you anywhere, as long as your name was on the agenda. Thank you. Could you just, again, just for the record, please provide your name and, and address?
Uh, my name is Rich Glenn. I'm with JT Engineering. Uh, you need my address, you said?
It's just a form.
I'm here in Swamaco, so it's twenty-nine ninety-seven Maple Grove Road.
Well, so much the better.
Hey, Andy, one thing about it. So the stop sign at the end of Rustic Haven Lane is missing.
Close and everything or just a sign?
Just a sign.
This one?
You may wanna check my neighbor's backyard.
Did you hear that? Nobody likes an arc.
I wonder if he's watching on Facebook, except the cop.
Which got my wife saying, well, do you have documentation for our stop sign that we have? I'm like, yes, I do.
All right, good to go?
Yep, you're good.
Wunderbar.
So Andy asked me to come in, just kinda talk over what's going on in the, the Lineville Road or County Trunk Highway M project. Um, I don't know how familiar you guys are with it. Um, the project is reconstructing Lineville from, um, Carolina Cherry or Belmont Road all the way to just short of West Deerfield Road. Um, I'll kinda walk you through each different segment. Generally what's going on is everyone knows traffic's growing. Um, when you set out to design a road project, you kinda look at least twenty years out and the traffic is to a point in twenty years easily that it needs to be four lanes through the whole thing. Um, so we kinda sat through and went through several alternatives, kinda looking at different options. You know, obviously there's a need for pedestrian and bicycle facilities as well, so just kinda walk you through the whole thing as we go through. Feel free to interrupt at any point. Don't mind talking about any little parts here, so. Um, the first section, Carolina Cherry and Belmont, this roundabout itself is just gonna be rehabbed. Um, it's generally gonna stay the same way it is. It's gonna be the single lane roundabout in all directions. There is gonna be a little slip lane going north on Carolina Cherry, um, to drop one of the, the through lanes. It's, I can zoom, I'll zoom in in a second. Uh, the other thing I wanna apologize for, these files, because they have so many graphics and everything in it, are very large, so it takes a second to refresh. So as I zoom in and out, it's gonna lag a little bit, just so everybody knows. So you can see it's four lane divided. Um, there's a median, that's what the green section is through the middle. Um, through this whole section with left turn lanes developed for the businesses. Um, this is the first detention pond. Um, it's a stormwater detention pond, um, used to meet the stormwater, you know, removal of suspended salads and cleanliness efforts for all stormwater that both the DNR, I think the village has standards, Howard has standards, so it's kind of a, a melding of all the standards together.
Was there a discussion, obviously, with the school district about the placement of that?
We did talk to them some, yes. Um, part of the issue is, and we were already negotiating for buying the, the land, they know about it. It's all out there. They've known about it for some time. Um, part of the issue is with how built out this whole thing is and then looking at the topography, you gotta find spots for ponds that are kind of in a lower area.
Yeah.
But not in wetlands, cause then DNR won't let you do it, and open areas, and there just isn't much out here, so.
I just know that they have so much planned for that field that.
Yep, so, and, I mean, we looked at a couple other places for them and we can talk through them as we go through, but it's really difficult out here, so. That's why, I mean, this one's quite large actually, because you gotta get as much as you can and as much treatment as you can at that point. So, um, so sure, and then Rockwell, um, to the north, it's gonna just stay two lanes and it's gonna be four lanes through the, the rest are the two lane roundabouts, similar to what's out at the frontage roads now. Um, I'll zoom in on this now that we can do it. So this is what the section is gonna look like. It'll take a second to clear up, I think. So four lanes each direction, the lighting's gonna be down the median. Um, we have a bike path on the north side of the road and sidewalk on the south side. So that's that section. So the next section, this will be what takes a second or two. Similar section through here, this is from what Rockwell developed. Um, one of the main differences is the majority of this will have a twiddle or a two-way left turn lane down the middle of this. Um, there was enough driveways through this whole section that trying to develop left turn lanes, make them, take them out, make them take them out, you just ended up with little slivers of islands if you even tried to do it. So it just didn't make sense. Um, so, yeah, you can see generally goes all the way through with that twiddle. Two, uh, bigger parts of this that are a little bit different is the crossing right in front of Lineville School. We're putting in a, the rapid flashing beacons. I can show a picture of them here a second, but I'll get through this talking first. And then actually right here at Condor, um, these are gonna be, because this section is five lanes wide with no median or no refuge for pedestrians to stop in, this is gonna be similar to what's out at Lamardi, or at Lambo, the big overhead ones. So they'll be a good way to get people crossing there as well. Um, I think there's a general thought that pedestrian traffic's gonna pick up overall through this section when this is all said and done because there's gonna be a lot more connectivity, um, whether it's the bike path on the north side or the, the added sidewalk through the whole length on the south side.
So these are gonna be flashing light crossings?
Yep, I can show you. I'll just jump over to this one.
Here's an example on Cardinal going south, uh.
Or by St. John's.
Yep, this is the one, this is the one that's gonna be in front of the school generally with the two, just the regular signs like this, the flashing lights that'll stop traffic, and this is the big one, so.
Yeah, and those are really, I mean, that one, particular one is really visible when you're down there.
What's the height of that?
Pardon?
Height?
Oh, I would have to, I don't know it for sure. I'm guessing eighteen feet at least. It's quite high. It's high enough, you know, whatever the oversized vehicles.
That's what I was asking.
Yes.
So what, is there, you just, I'm sorry, continue.
Pardon?
Just continue, sorry.
Oh, okay.
I'll ask the question, save the questions for the.
Yeah, if you go back, what have we done to address particular times of the day, student drop off and student pickup, especially student pickup coming from Lineville intermediate, what have they done to get some of that traffic off of VELP?
Actually, one of the things is, so they've already, you know, changed the a- access obviously off of Cardinal to pull it farther back. And one of the things that I've worked with Andy and it doesn't show up completely on here, but there is, instead of being a single lane to the north, it's two lanes to the north all the way hooking up to where it currently is already two lanes north.
Current layers, it's two lanes going north, two north lanes and one south. So we're gonna resurface that this year in twenty-three ahead of this project, so when twenty-four goes, it'll match into ours and we'll have two northbound lanes. We'll have a through lane and a turn lane into the school at all times.
Okay.
We won't have that restricted traffic backed up in the roundabout.
Right, that, that's awesome.
Yeah, it needed it. My kids would work alone here, so I know that's all.
It is, it's like a, if, you're like, oh man, and then you, I completely go a different way, cause you know you're sitting there.
I look at the clock and it's like, oh crap, it's quarter after two.
Yeah.
And then that won't be destroyed with the construction of the bigger stuff, what we're paving this year?
Nope, we are gonna have exact matching limits, so.
Yeah, we coordinated that ahead of time that ours stops right where yours starts.
Okay.
So here's the typical section of this one, same, you know, bike path on the north side, sidewalk on the other side. Just the lighting has to be down the sides, cause there's.
Is that a multi-use path or is it just bike? And is the sidewalk on the other side necessary?
It's.
It's already there.
I mean, with the schools and everything else, it's highly recommended, we'll put it that way.
But it's multi-use, so you can walk or bike or, okay.
And then you also have quite a few businesses on the south side too.
Okay.
Trying to, you know, to surface them on the south side.
Are you, is that a new sidewalk or are you using existing?
We weren't able to use existing with the road getting so much wider. The other thing we tried to do is look at places where we could save the lights that went in. There's one small stretch that we're able to save the lights completely, I think. I don't know, it's, I don't even.
We were promised when we bought those.
We are gonna reuse.
You know, I knew it.
We're gonna reuse the poles.
We were promised. We were promised we would save those.
Well, they're saving though. They're using the poles.
All the poles will be reused.
They're using the equipment, but there's gonna be some moving costs.
Uh, next section from VELP to Cornell. So this is the section where the sidewalk on the south side actually drops off because there's just nothing to serve. Um, so this goes back to the median, um, through the whole thing, lighting down the middle again. Um, this is the second proposed pond location. Um, right now we're working with the DNR. There is a tiny little wetland like right here, right where the hand is now, um, that they're concerned with that we're impacting. It's, I think, eight hundred square feet is all it is. So they're trying to, we're trying to work with them to see if that can get accepted. It's a whole process.
That's, I'll just be frank, that's unbelievable. Like, don't they have better things to worry about? Seriously.
I wish we knew someone who had a wet.
Think of how much time and effort is being put into this little bit of wetland. It's just, it's ridiculous. Sorry.
It's.
I'll get off my soapbox.
I just wish we knew someone who had a wetland bank. That'd be nice.
No kidding, so.
This is crazy.
This one, so previously there's the three driveways, you know, one out of the festival, one out of like Perry's Naturally area, and then one into, um, Quick Trip. Um, in the past, I think it's gotten better recently with the added two-way left turn lane, but with traffic picking up so much, we're kinda looking for a way to combine those to have it one access point. So you can see we've, we've reconfigured this whole area to have it one, one access point that serve all three of those. Um, we went through and did a whole design to make sure all the trucks that come in and out of Festival can still make all these turns and it was, it was quite a lengthy effort. We've already talked to all three of the property, or the businesses and the property owners. Seems to be that it's gonna go through fine. I mean, you never know once the right away acquisition purchase starts going through, but as it stands right now, it looks like it's gonna work out.
And, and that's actually kinda nice that you can't make a left-hand turn back out of there, that you have to just go out to the roundabout and go back, that's.
Exactly. It just.
People wait there forever right now trying to make a left-hand turn. Is that multi-use path? Is that on the south side or the north side?
North side.
Uh, thank you.
North side. That, it, that was specifically done because of all these businesses that are here.
Well, and if you put it on the south side, there may be like two hundred square feet of wetland or something down there that.
There's plenty of.
It's soapbox making a turn.
Makes sense, good.
So, um, roundabouts, the same thing, basically two lanes going through the roundabouts, you know, a single lane going north. VELP, actually, we're doing two lanes going north and south out of this. It's largely because we have all these driveways immediately after to make sure that we try to separate traffic, allow them to make the turning movements into each individual business through there. And then this, this develops better for, the south one develops better for trains coming. Train comes that hopefully that right lane will ca- stay blocked up and maybe the left lane can keep going if we can keep people from just driving into the middle of the roundabout when the train's there. I mean, there's only so much we can do, but we're trying.
Wasn't at one time, there supposed to be another little slip lane right there to go north?
To go north?
Yeah.
We did discuss it. Um, it's just, how did, what? The problem isn't, the length of the slip lane would be short enough that if people are gonna jam it up, it'd just get bottled up too. It was, we, we did all kinds of modeling on it. It all, all it comes down to honestly, people, is if the train's there, if the people who wanna cross the train would just stop, so much more traffic could go through here. It's just.
If they would not block up the roundabout, yeah, yeah.
It, it's, I mean, I don't know. We actually at one point had a discussion on potentially putting down gates and cutting off certain movements, but it's, it's so difficult and so unusual that we're kind of afraid that the safety aspect of it, for people not used to that, all of a sudden having a gate in front of them and it just could've created more problems than it was worth, so.
If the train could just go through and not go through and then back up. And then go forward.
It wouldn't be a train then.
The train on that track that Escanaba or in Lake Superior track.
Yeah, I don't think Canadian National does that.
That track is so beat up that I think they're maxed out at like fifteen miles an hour crossing there. Part of what's gonna happen here, the actual crossing's gonna be redone and they're actually talking about doing significantly more. So the speed of the trains will pick up, so that'll help, so. No promises, I'm not a train engineer, so that's just what they told us. This section is similar to the one at the other end, um, in front of school, other than there is no sidewalk on the south side. It is a ditch over there outside the curb and gutter. Um, and that's largely because there is an existing ditch they're now handling the water that's coming through. Next section, Cornell to Brookfield. Here we go, here's a nice long one. So it's similar cross section. Um, this one's quite easy, there's just no driveways, it's all wetlands as far as you can see. Nothing really significant to talk about. There is a retaining wall in front of the advanced, what is it? I can't remember what the name of it is. I think it's a tax accounting place, kinda, small retaining wall just because of how close everything was getting to the, the property. Obviously, this is turning into a full roundabout, um, to get, this is the bottle room entrance right here. I'm sure, I know, I've sat there many, many times, even though I know better than to try to make a left turn out of there, waiting to try to make a left turn out of there, but it'll, it's gonna be fixed, I mean, with that roundabout.
Who's, who's roundabout is that gonna be?
Uh, we're gonna just divide everything up in half. We haven't figured out who's in what yet. We've been doing everything east of VELP, it, Howard's been doing everything west, but we'll split it.
Again, another railroad crossing here, the tra- or the crossing's gonna be completely reconstructed. It has to be to get the added widening.
And that multi-use is going to Deer Field only elevated?
Yes, it's going all the way up to tie into the ones that are up at the roundabout now.
I, I mean, I question how necessary that is, but now, is there a sidewalk on the other side there? Okay, well, at least.
Drop the sidewalk.
Okay.
Cause there's just nothing to serve down there.
Okay.
So how did you put the multi-use path on the north side with all those wetlands?
It's just, we kinda slid the road around the best we could and we have the impacts and.
Don't ask questions.
I mean, really.
Yeah, they might change their mind.
Yeah.
If we go south, it's gonna push into these couple little properties.
Is our sign being moved then, our Welcome to Swamaco sign?
Yep, so we'll pull that out before that phase gets underway.
It'll be your chance to get it elevated and get those.
Yeah, is it not gonna float, like concrete floating, maybe?
Well, we're gonna pull it out and we got some ideas.
Trim the trees back, so you can actually see it.
This section has kind of an unusual intersection at Brookfield because of the state off. The driveway's so close there, we talked to them about possibly moving their driveway or changing their access cause it's not ideal to have everything so tight like that, but with their scales and everything over here, there was just nothing we could do. So it's, it's kinda the best of a bad situation, I guess. And the last section, really not much to this at all. It's just kinda taking her to the end. So, yeah, just kinda taking the same thing to the end with the lighting down the middle, tying into the roundabouts that are there now.
Should put a roundabout right there. I mean, we got one at every other intersection.
How the project's gonna go, there's kind of a staging plan in place. This year, I would guess late summer. It's gonna get done before school starts, well, the roundabout is. They're gonna do the work at Belmont, um, just to get that roundabout done and get that work out of the plate, out of the way, um, just to minimize the impacts on the school and the access to the schools going forward. They're gonna do that and then do the, the pond, dig the pond there. Um, basically there, this, the impact to Belmont's gonna be so insignificant that it's just gonna be minor delays. I mean, there may be closures during the daytime and open it up back at nighttime or something like that. It'll be coordinated, you'll see it out in the news kinda thing.
And that's, that's this year?
Yes.
Okay.
This summer, yep. So that's just to kinda get a jump on things. And then first stage in twenty twenty-four is going to be basically the day school gets out, they're gonna start working on the section from Belmont through Cardinal, um, and trying, they're gonna get all that built up before school starts. That keeps access, the reason we did Belmont before is it keeps access on Belmont into the school as well as off of Cardinal. Cause then while this is happening, it's gonna be completely shut, closed down to low, or through traffic, local traffic. Wants to get to the businesses can get in there. Um, with the detour route, you can see kinda going VELP to Cardinal, VELP Lane and back up Belmont. With the detour route, you can see kinda going Velp to Cardinal, Velp Lane, and back up Belmont. The next stage in twenty-four is the section from Cardinal to the railroad tracks. This'll be following right after in fall. So getting it done as quick as it can through fall before winter comes, getting that section done. They'll also start digging that other pond at some point in there. That can even happen over winter depending on how wet everything is and how everything's going. The intent is to kinda keep that going as best it can to get the pond dug and get it in place before spring when it gets really wet.
Belmont to Cardinal is early twenty-four?
Is Belmont to Cardinal will be as soon as school's done, so.
So, summer?
June, July, August.
Okay.
That's. I mean, specifically, like I said, we don't, it's gonna be hard enough on the school having all the other work going on. The last thing we wanna do is start messing with their access. Yep, and then late twenty-four is this section with the detour route going Velp to Cardinal and round on Wooddale. The next stage will be twenty-five, and then twenty-five gets to be a lot of little stages to start out with because there's so much going on at this Velp intersection. So the first thing that's gonna happen is they're gonna close down the Velp intersection. They will keep access into the QuickTrip Mini Mall, that's about, they're gonna be the end of. The work is gonna be right before that, get all of Velp all built out. You can see the, the, um, detour going from Cornell to Wooddale and up to Cardinal. The next section is, this is just that driveway access for QuickTrip, it's gonna be a quick stage, I mean, a couple of weeks, I'm guessing. That's getting done so that, that, the access at that corner is so difficult, so that this way they can keep going on Lineville, pass it, and then come back around on Velp to enter into the, the, their businesses through there. After that, then this stage is, there's enough construction going off, off south of the existing road that we can build almost two lanes without even impacting the traffic on Lineville. So Lineville's completely open at this point. The construction is just off, off alignment, there'll be, I mean, obviously drums, and they'll be working right up next to where the traffic is, you know, pulling things back and flagging, that kinda thing. But they are able to get, you know, this section from the end of the Velp construction up to Cornell out of traffic. After that, this is where it gets, so now, after that, the traffic going westbound will be pushed over to those new lanes so that they can come off of forty-one, come all the way through and keep going through. Eastbound traffic going back towards forty-one will take this detour from Velp to Cornell and back around as the north side of this is reconstructed, including the roundabout. Just seems like a, the best option for keeping traffic to these businesses. I mean, they're, it's gonna be a struggle for all of them without keep, without having their full access. I mean, even all the way down to the stage that was done the time before, if we were to close this off, it would be troublesome for them. So, doing everything we can to make it easier on them. And the last stage is big chunk all the way through the wetlands, um, getting it tied up. Twenty-five is going to be a big year of construction, there's a lot for them to do, so hopefully they're out there pushing hard.
It's gonna be completely closed during that stage?
This, this section is, yep, it'll be going down the frontage road, Wooddale and backup Velp. Yep.
It is what it is.
We do have some costs put together. I have it separated by year and then by project too. Total cost for everything except wetland mitigation. Because we're still talking to the DNR about wetlands and how much they're gonna make us mitigate, everything else. I mean, there's, I believe there's over four acres of wetland impacts on this project, which is more than I've ever seen in my whole career. I mean, it's a lot, I mean, and they're obviously having heartburn over it, no one likes it, but when you're going through that section from, from Cornell to West Deerfield, there's really no choice. I mean, you're gonna hit it.
There's nowhere else to go.
What?
There's nowhere else to go.
Right, exactly. So it's like, we're, we're hopefully getting that through to the DNR and their discussion, but it's baby steps, so.
You gotta find, you gotta find the DNR people that live out in this area that have to travel that road right now.
Jim might live in this area, actually, so, but, yeah, he's doing his job. I mean, let's be honest, I mean, he's given responsibilities, that's what he does. So that's where we're sitting right now, um, for costs. I don't know, I mean, if anyone has any questions, I'm more than willing to go through and give you more information or anything you need to know.
Yeah, I had one question going back to the first section that you showed off of Belmont. So there were the two crosswalks that you were putting in. One was the eighteen-foot highly marked crosswalk, similar to the one that you referenced at Lambo Field? And the other one was not quite the same. Why was there a variation in terms of the marking?
Because the one, the big one, I can talk through this one.
Yeah, the big one was near the school.
The big one, so there's traffic, or pedestrians have to cross five lanes and one run, run, okay?
Right.
The other one, you're two lanes, you have a median refuge.
I see, okay.
And then you have two more lanes, so it's much shorter, and then the signs will have, you know, two signs for each direction even too. So each lane of traffic will have a sign.
So there's a safety zone in the middle?
Yes.
So if you can frogger to the middle, you're good.
Right.
And it's one of those things, you push the button and the lights light up?
Yes, both of them will be that way, yes.
Thank you.
Are you confident in your two-point-five percent inflation rate?
That was, was, no, I'm not confident in any inflation rate when it comes to construction right now. So, I don't know if you guys are aware of everything that happened. From January through August, the inflation rate, the inflation from that time for construction costs was close to eight percent for just those months. From August until like right now, it's actually regressed a little bit, it's gone down a little.
But it's the same way for the economy?
Right.
In general, yeah.
What's regressed and it's growth, you mean?
Pardon?
It's regressed and it's growth?
It's regressed in general, it's actually.
Have we de, are we in deflation?
I don't think we are, I think it's just a correction period from the ridiculous months it went up previously, but that's contractors that one.
We were near nine percent and I think it's down closer to six percent.
Yeah.
But that's.
Still crazy.
Yeah. Okay, I appreciate it, this very, very helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there a way to get this, or can you get this presentation?
Yeah, we can put some of the same slides and information on our website maybe.
I was gonna say, you're gonna do a tab on our website, I'm assuming, right?
They're all up on Brown Counties right now, so we can just get to the same things and, you know.
I mean, there's a lot of folks who are wondering when Lineville's gonna get.
Ugly.
Yeah. Before it gets really good.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
Whose screen is that?
Got enough PDFs, sir? Okay.
What?
It's pretty hard to get a bingo when it's that big.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on, shall we?
Yes.
So we are at item number seven, item number seven is the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening contains the previous minutes of the village board from twelve nineteen twenty twenty-two and twelve twenty-two twenty twenty-two, special village board meeting. Item B, November twenty twenty-two treasures report. Item C, December twenty twenty-two municipal court report. Item D, November twenty twenty-two animal control report. Item E, December twenty twenty-two recreation report. Item F, cemetery committee appointments. Item G, Moody's rating update. And item seven H, December twenty twenty-two fire department report. Is there a discussion or questions from board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from trustee Eckert to approve, and we have a second from trustee Schneider. Any other further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero, thank you. Wouldn't it be wonderful if in twenty twenty-three, every consent agenda was just that smooth with that many items?
We will do our best.
I am so hopeful.
I'm not slipping.
Okay. Item number eight, planning and zoning. Item eight A, final plat of Windrush Crossing of Hunter's Run Administrator Dunks.
Zoning.
Administrator Dunks. It does say Administrator Dunks, it should say zoning Administrator Dunks, yes.
It should.
Somebody promoted themselves.
I, I didn't.
Thank you. We are looking at about a thirteen, not quite thirteen and a half acre site here. It is already zoned, uh, sewed residential. This will be a subdivision served by public sewer, water is not available. The preliminary plot was approved by the board on August fifteenth of twenty twenty-two. All the conditions of that have pretty much been met. Proposed plat should be the final plat within the Hunter's Run subdivision. The preliminary plat did contain eighteen lots, lot five was eliminated for the stormwater pond that was required. So the final plat now has seventeen lots, all designated for single-family use. All lots do appear to meet code requirements. The twenty-five foot building setback shown on that plat is consistent with the rest of Hunter's Run. Lots six through twelve do have floodplain located on those lots. On the twenty twenty-three maps, um, it does remove most of that floodplain. Any of the floodplain appears to be in what would be ESA or wetlands. So it should not impact any building areas or such on those lots. They cannot show the twenty twenty-three maps because they don't come effective until May ninth of twenty twenty-three. So they won't, even though the roads and the subdivision will not be accepted for building permits, it's what's on the books as of the time it goes through Brown County. And they wanna get this moving, so they're not gonna hold off. Recording the final plat, which would be a requirement of our development, developer's agreement and such, so. That we'll deal with it as it is, that they won't have to meet the floodplain requirements even though the plat shows it in floodplain because we'll have new and, and better information. Sanitary sewer is already installed. There's a few laterals that will have to be located as part of the construction. Some of the existing storm sewer is also being relocated as part of the project. Staff would like all stormwater and drainage language on the plat to be the same. Right now, we've got some of it that says stormwater easements and some that says drainage easements. So we just want that all consistent, so there's no confusion. There is a cluster box shown on the plat, the location on the plat is lots thirteen and fourteen, um, and the diagram or the detail on the right side of that actually shows, I think, lot fourteen and fifteen, so we need that corrected. It's not a big deal, um, just a clerical error. And we would need a developer's agreement prior to the signing of that final plat. Parkland dedication fees and administrative fees do reflect the new one, the new fees based on the reduction of one lot. That's why they don't match the original motion and what we want is tonight's motion. At the planning commission level, we did have some questions from the homeowners association about the grade of that proposed road. This is connecting South Windrush with Windrush. That sewer with the manholes is, is already installed and that exists, that proposed grade is pretty close to, to what has been planned from day one, when they put the sewer in with the, with the manholes and the height of those manholes. So from a staff perspective, we're comfortable with the, the grade of that. They, they do need to keep that up there to get flow to that pond. And to, to get our stormwater to flow correctly, by lowering that, it's gonna make it difficult for that pond to function for what its design is, so. Just to bring up the data on what has been brought forward, thank you.
Wasn't this, a couple of years ago, there was a lot back here that they couldn't build on it because DNR considered it wetlands? And then we went and said, well, we won't be able to finish this road at all? What transpired that is allowing this to finally go through again?
They had, they actually went out and had a wetland delineation done, and it's shown for the majority of it to be out of wetlands. That lot was, actually, we were more concerned with the lots on Locksley also being deemed wetlands than anything. You know? This one, you know, we would like to see it completed, we've got sewer in there that we're maintaining today.
Right, I'm glad it is being completed.
You know, um, but Locksley was more concerning because now we've got homes down there, we're plowing roads, and they're gonna come in and tell us that lots aren't buildable and stuff, yeah, that's where that, and we had, the drainage ditch was also labeled a navigable stream, which at the time made four of the lots totally unbuildable, but there is a, something that allowed us not to require the fifty-foot setback from a navigable stream, so. We're, we actually, thankfully, that allowed us to leave those as buildable lots.
Other questions for Mr. Dunk?
Glad this is finally going through.
No other questions for Mr. Dunks? Uh, we should try to open this up in case there's anyone in the audience who likes to, would like to speak to this.
Motion to open.
Second.
So we have a motion to open this up for public comment, and we have a motion by trustee Eckert and a second by trustee Rodden. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak to this? If you would, please come forward, provide your name and address, and let us know what's on your mind.
I will make a motion to close public comment.
Thank you. A motion to close public comment by trustee Rodden, a second by trustee Schneider. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven zero, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the Windrush Crossing final plat with the following conditions, correct the details for the CBU to match the lot location, label all stormwater and drainage easement as stormwater easements, approval and signing of a developer's agreement, payment of four thousand eight hundred dollars in Parkland dedication fees, payment of thirty-four hundred dollars in administration fees, and then it meets all the requirements of all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and review and agencies.
Thank you, trustee Rodden has made a motion to approve the Windrush Crossing final plat with the conditions one through six, as he so eloquently mentioned. Is there any, a second?
Second.
A second from trustee Schneider. Is there any further comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Right, thank you. We are at eight B, which is a public hearing, a request by Vertical Bridge BTS Two LLC for approval of a conditional use to allow a telecommunications tower at thirty-five oh one Veterans Avenue, parcel SU two seventy-eight, located on the northwest corner of School Lane and Veterans Avenue, zoned business with PDD. Zoning Administrator Dunks.
Thank you. We are looking at a two-acre site here. What they're proposing is a hundred and sixty-foot monopole structure with supporting ground utilities in a fenced compound. Access to that compound is from the existing parking lot. That compound is adjacent to the north end of that said parking lot. Setback would be the same as the main structure on Veterans Ave. Supporting documents do seem to confirm the need for coverage and the lack of an existing pole to meet that need, which is one of the conditions of approving it. Location is surrounded basically by business-owned properties, most of which are established. There's one lot immediately to the north and one lot directly across from the proposed site that are both vacant. Staff did check with Brown County, it does show that there's ESA in this area, and Brown County has given their approval for their location. They've had their discussions with Brown County and everything appears to be in order from that end. Planning commission motion was to recommend approval unanimously. Thank you.
How far are homes from that?
How far are what?
How far are any homes?
I think the closest you have, I think, is across the street, like, north kitty corner to the east, right?
Okay.
That or the duplexes, the duplexes straight to the north on Veterans.
So Snowshoe Estates, trustee Eckert, so.
Oh, okay. Where is it?
So it's right where it says Stephen.
Oh, okay.
Well, it's actually on the Banks, Bank property.
Yes, it'll be on the Banks property.
Well, make sure we cover everything I'll.
Well, make sure we cover everything. I'll make a motion to open this to public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to open this up for public discussion, public hearing, from trustee Schneider and a second from trustee Rodden. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Good evening. Please share.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Beenick. I'm with a company called LCC Telecom Services. We're located at one zero seven hundred West Higgins Road, two forty in Rosemont, Illinois, and we represent Vertical Bridge. I'm here to answer any questions with you unless you want me to go over all the details. Basically, as Mr. Dunks is showing you right now, these are the propagation maps that kind of show exactly what the existing coverage is. The tower is being built by Vertical Bridge. It's being built initially, it's what's called a build-to-suit. It's being built initially for Cellcom. So these are Cellcom's propagation maps. You can see the area it right, right there, that that is where the proposed tower is. Essentially, what you're trying to get is more the red and the oranges that you see on the the propagation maps. Those are kind of the in-building coverage, the real good coverage. The yellow is good coverage. If you're driving in your car, you know, or in a regular stick-built house, you'd probably have very good coverage. And then the blues are, and the whites are what we're trying to get away from. So if you flip to the next slide, please, that's this site isolated. And then if you go to the next map, that will show how it fits into that that network. So essentially, by putting in this tower at hundred and sixty-foot rad center for Cellcom, that is the expected coverage gap that would be filled. So that's essentially what we're looking at. We do have a lease agreement with Associated Bank. We've designed the site as as was shown just north of the parking lot in line with the the building for the setbacks. We are kind of using a little bit smaller lease area than what's typically used in this area because of there are some wetlands back over there. So we're trying to obviously stay away from that, as you guys discussed on a couple of items earlier, so. That's essentially what we're looking at doing.
What's the proposed timeline for this?
Well, we've got to get zoning approval, building permit, and then we would also need to get an E nine-one-one. The likely would be probably in the spring. Depends on Mother Nature, of course. That always plays a big part.
And it's just Cellcom?
Initially, Vertical Bridge is in the the industry as a tower owner. They make their revenue off of leasing space to other carriers. So they don't build the tower until they have a carrier in line. So Cellcom was looking for coverage in this area. They hired Vertical Bridge to go out and build the tower for them. Because that way they can keep their money into the the service end of it. So once Vertical Bridge puts the tower up, they will put out notice to all the the relative carriers in this area, including, you know, the the major ones and other smaller companies that service this area. So say AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, whatever, if they're interested, they would contact Vertical Bridge. They have most, with almost every company, a master lease agreement, so they, it makes co-location very easy.
So that coverage will go all the way pretty good up to Little Swamaco, at least along the bay?
Yeah. Now, and and again, these are just models. The way propagation works, it's kind of like a rubber band. You're kind of sort of in an urban area, so they they don't cover as big as, like, if we were up in the extreme north Wisconsin, where that's like three to six miles. In this area, you're talking between one and three miles, a little bit bigger. But the way it works is, you know, it, middle of the night, you're covering that whole giant area, no problems. But then you got rush out, you know, when the kids are getting out of school or going to school, they're all using their phones. The parents, you know, coming home from work, what do I need to bring home, you know, that type of thing. That area shrinks a little bit, so it it kind of ebbs and flows depending on the time of day and the the usage on the site.
Other questions?
I'll make a motion to close public comment. Second.
Thank you, sir, for your time. Thank you, I, for a long drive.
No problem. Thank you.
So we have a motion to close a public comment from trustee Schneider and seconded by trustee Rodden?
Second.
Something like that.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. If there's no other comment, I would offer a motion to approve the conditional use to construct a hundred and sixty-foot monopole telecommunications tower at thirty-five oh one Veterans Avenue, adjacent to the north side of the existing parking lot with the following rules. Just to meet all the requirements of all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
Second.
And I have a second from trustee Rodden. Is there any further comment or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Safe travels. All right, moving on. Item number nine, Public Works, Items Twenty Twenty-three Pickup Truck Purchases, Director Smith.
All right, thank you. Village previously had budgeted in twenty twenty-two for the replacement of two fleet vehicles. Did not take place because fleet ordering only lasted for eight hours last year across the state. So we were hoping to wait it out and have things return back to normal. It does not appear that it's gonna be back to the normal ordering process like we were used to, you know, prior to the last couple of years. So I reached out to a couple of dealers here lately and they're hopeful that fleet ordering may open up in twenty twenty-three for longer than it lasted last year, but there's still no guarantees any of our orders will be taken or processed. So I tried to get as best pricing as possible. Nothing's locked in or guaranteed at this time. But we carried over the monies from last year to this year's budget. And now I got some pricing and unfortunately, we're not gonna receive the municipal discounts like we used to. I think if we were to receive those, you know, the monies we had budgeted would be enough. But at this point, that municipal discount is no longer on the table. At some point in the future, I think it'll come back. It's just not there yet.
Is that based on demand? Just because there's such high demand that they've just eliminated municipal discounts?
Yep, there's just no room anymore for these, the program that was offered to the dealerships for that municipal discount. And we used to get, you know, anywhere from seventy, nine thousand on a discount, which helped, you know, us. So after receiving the information I got here a couple of weeks ago, you know, the budget and money we had is gonna be short. So I'm requesting that we increase the half-ton pickup truck from forty to fifty-five and a three-quarter ton from fifty to sixty-five thousand. That should cover it if and when these orders become open again and that we can can get an order in at any one of those areas. So we'll be, for you today, with the motion to approve or deny increasing the budget by thirty thousand to cover those two vehicles funded out of the places reserve. And at the end of this year, in twenty twenty-three, before that additional thirty thousand, we would have, we would have a fund total of one million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Are we, we're not paying over like a window sticker price for these, are we?
No, we're still gonna, we're hoping to go through the fleet ordering process. It's just I have to have my specs into them. They have to have it processed and signed. When that window opens, they send it in. But last year, that window was only eight hours, and if you didn't have a spec in somebody's hand signed already, you didn't make that cut. You know, the police department ran into the same situation.
That was my secondary question. Are we getting a Durango this year? Have they, are they working on that?
I gotta check in with Mark, see where he is on that. I'll get back to you.
Can you have him get to back to us to see where they're at with that, too?
The Durango?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I know both of these.
I was told that we're, the fleet ordering is supposed to happen like sometime in April or May. That's what I'm guessing, but then, you know, if everybody's waiting to that point, I mean, they're gonna get overloaded again.
Right.
I don't know how it's gonna work, actually. Hopefully, we have our stuff locked in with somebody and they can process it and get it in, and we can get our vehicles maybe by the end of this year.
I'll make a motion to improve, increasing the allowed budget for the two pickup trucks from ninety thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand and allow staff to order as soon as they have confirmation the fleet order is open. I don't have to read the rest of that.
No. So we have a motion on the floor from trustee Rodden to approve the additional thirty thousand dollars for the purchase of the two trucks. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from trustee Andrews. Are there any further questions or discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Do we need to go back and do this as a roll call because we approved thirty thousand dollars?
It it really should be a roll call vote.
There you go.
I mean, I.
Do we need a motion to go back and?
On it, but I can just, I can just go ahead and.
Sure.
Take the roll call.
Please do.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Ward.
Right.
Trustee Romez.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
President Finrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously seven to zero.
Thank you. All right. We are now on item ten A, County Rescue Agreement. Administrator Kaker.
All right, thank you. So back in two thousand twenty, the village executed an agreement with County Rescue to provide ambulance services for the village through twenty thirty-five. In that agreement, there was a stipulation in there that talked about if they ever changed who the obligation was for, they'd have to come back and get approval for the village board. This is simply a name change, so there's currently two branches of County Rescue. There's the Aegis Group and County Rescue. My understanding is that either for legal and or tax implications, they they made a decision to consolidate. So there'll be Aegis Group, but doing business as County Rescue, so you'll still see County Rescue signs on their ambulances. And just to play everything straight, there should be an addendum to our agreement that acknowledges that change. So that's all that's going on here.
No changes, just the name?
No procedural changes. It's just a name change.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed addendum to the January, to the January twenty-third, twenty twenty ambulance agreement with County Rescue Services as presented.
Second.
There are motion on the floor from trustee Rodden to approve the proposed addendum to the January twenty-third, twenty twenty ambulance agreement with County Rescue. And we have a second from trustee Schneider. Any further discussion or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Okay, I think we are on to discussion of future agenda items. Anyone? Discussion of future agenda items.
I know she's on vacation, but just wanted to acknowledge and thank Jessica for her six years of service to the Village of Swamaco as our finance director and wish her the best of luck as she transitions to another position.
Absolutely.
All right, if there's no other future agenda items, I would look for a motion to move to closed session.
I'll make a motion to move in closed session under nineteen point eight-five parent one parent gene, conferring with legal counsel for the government body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategies to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to become involved, and that would be under one of the score. Or land claims.
Thank you. Trustee Schneider has made the motion to move to closed session. Is there a, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from trustee Andrews. All those in favor, please signify. Oh, sorry, you're right, roll call. Thank you.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Romez.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
President Finrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously seven to zero.
Let's go to closed session.
No, we can close the door. Yeah.